Good evening, welcome to the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting of May 8th, 2006. Please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, wishless.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Lunn?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Chair Wall?
Here. It is time for public comments, and at this time, we do not have any public comment speaker cards. I just want to make sure that that's correct. It appears that it is. Will the Secretary -- oh, I'm sorry. Written comments, announcements, and continuaces, please, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that you do have a supplemental that was faxed to you earlier today, which is a -- which concerns the appeal RP of minor mod 2005-70487. And in addition to that, there are a couple of things received since the supplemental packet went out. The first is regarding 2004-71094, and that is case 6B. Those -- and there's some addition -- additions to the conditions from the Traffic Division. And that's suggested language for two conditions and a photograph, which explains it. The traffic staff member will review that when that item comes up. And then, there has also been several letters that were submitted to you on the dais. And as always, if you feel that you need some time to review these before we continue, that is within your prerogative to do. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. The supplemental packets are not extensive. Is there any planning commissioner that feels they need additional time? No? Okay. Please call case 6A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case PPD 2006-70031. Applicant Joseph Chilano requests to allow construction of a first and second floor addition to an existing two-story, single-family dwelling. Location: 750 Azalea Street. Recommendation: Approved with conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Lunn, you're presenting.
Good evening, Chair Wall and members of the Commission. For your consideration this evening, the first case is PPD application requesting for a first and single story -- a first and second story addition to an existing two-story house. If I may direct your attention to the screen. Location is 750 Azalea Street. The proposed addition consists of first floor, it's going to be a living room, dining room, and kitchen expansion, plus a patio cover to the left rear. Second floor consists of a bonus and a bedroom. Location, again, is end of cul-de-sac at 750 Azalea Street. This is the view of the front elevation. The view of the rear elevation. The proposed addition will be on the right side of it, of the screen. And the total room addition is 935 square foot, maximum height 22 foot and 6 inches. That recommends approval based on the findings and conditions detailed in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Lunn. Are there questions for Mr. Lunn? Seeing none, we will go to our first speaker, Joey Chilano. Mr. Chilano, please state your name, city of residence, and you have 15 minutes.
I'm a Thousand Oaks resident. I am the owner of the home, and I'd like to get this approved for the additional area. Based on the location, the size of my family has grown, and I would like to hear approval for the additional.
You just need to speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
And just the additional growth of my family, I need some additional space, and that's what I'm asking for this approval for. Any questions?
Are there questions? No. Commissioner Reynolds.
Good evening. Did you talk to your neighbors about the two-story addition?
I have.
And there's no concern about it, or?
Not at all. They just like the property values going up.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chilano.
Thank you.
Please be seated. You will have five minutes. I think, at this point, we return to Mr. Lunn because we have no other speakers on this case. Mr. Lunn, is there anything you needed to add?
Um, no.
Okay. Mr. Chilano, is there anything else that you would like to address? Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we'll close the public hearing and go to commission comments or motion. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve entitlement number 2006-70031 PPD PC with the findings and conditions listed in our report. There's certainly plenty of room on this lot to -- for this addition. And also wanted to mention to the applicant, it's really nice to see a -- the safety fencing that you have around the pool, that is outstanding. I wish more people in town, and not only in the county, did that as well. So, looks like a good project. Congratulations.
Okay. Are there any comments to Commissioner Fisher? I would like to just like to add that I also am very pleased that you've spoken with your neighbors and have this all worked out. It looks like a good addition. There's no waivers requested, and I'm also in support of the motion. Thank you. Please vote. There is a 10-day appeal period. Thank you. Will the Secretary please call case 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding case AA 2004-71094. Applicant Robert and Lisa Racine request to allow construction of a first and second story addition with a balcony to an existing, single-story, single-family detached dwelling. Location: 1473 El Monte Drive. Recommendation: Approved with conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Lunn, you are also presenting case 6B.
Yes, for your second consideration this evening, an administrative action application has been filed requesting for a first and second story addition with balconies to a existing, single-story home. The proposed addition exceeds 50 percent of the original footprint, and also, it exceeds 2,000 square foot, which triggers a administrative action application. If I may direct your attention to the screen, the location is 1473 El Monte Drive. The addition consists for the first floor of a one-car garage and front porch addition, and to the rear, expansion of kitchen and dining with a pantry. Second floor addition consists of bedrooms, bathrooms, and balconies. Location is 1473 El Monte Drive. This is a view of front elevation. View of the right side yard, the Jan's Road is actually higher than the proposed -- the property. View of the rear elevations. View of the rear yard. Total room addition is 3,392 square foot, maximum height is 25 feet. Staff recommends approval based on the findings and conditions detailed in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Lunn. Are there any questions for Mr. Lunn? None? Okay. I just wanted to check and make sure that at this time, we still have no concerns about the balcony that faces a neighboring property's -- property owner's house.
Um, no. Staff did not receive any phone calls or written letters prior to this. The proposed balcony is to the right side of the property, which faces Jan's Road, and toward the rear, which faces a vacant property at this point.
Okay, thank you. I did have that confused. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Robert Racine, please. Mr. Racine, please state your name, city of residence, and you have 15 minutes.
Thank you. Robert Racine, Thousand Oaks. I just have a brief statement to make, and then I'll answer questions. Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, members of the public, friends and neighbors, my wife and I appear before you this evening to encourage you to improve our request to allow construction of an addition to our home. We have resided in Thousand Oaks now for nearly six years. In that time, we have grown to realize that we have never, and doubtful will ever, find another place we enjoy as much as our home on El Monte Drive. Our decision to enlarge our home is born out of anticipation of what lies ahead for our immediate and extended family. Our objective is to maximize the welfare, comfort, and security of our family. While ambitious, we have designed the size and layout of our addition to mitigate impact on our neighbors, while providing a functional and aesthetically pleasing abode for us in a complimentary dwelling for the neighborhood. In summary, we concur with the findings of entitlement 2004-71094, and ask that you unanimously vote for approval of our application. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Racine? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening. I'm very pleased with your plans. I, more or less, ran the Homeowners Association Caneo Oaks for probably about 20 years, and I'm very familiar with your property. Have you seen the additional condition that has been put on, and do you have any objections?
I had a telephone call about an hour ago from the traffic. I don't object to the sidewalk. I think that would be an improvement to the neighborhood. That is a little bit hard to maintain out there, and we have folks transiting there all the time. So I agree, and I am willing to absorb that cost.
Okay, and also with the trimming of the trees?
I have no problem there either.
Okay. I didn't know if the property was all your -- all the way to the curb, because at one time, of course, Jan's Road didn't go through.
Right.
And that property, I always thought, was just kind of an oddball lot out there, but yours is all the way, except for the easement.
When we purchased those lots, there were two.
Right.
And we recently did a lot-line merger, which basically consolidated the two into one lot, specifically to accommodate this construction project. Right now, I believe the -- some total of the lot is about .8 acres.
Okay, well, that's -- that's great. And talking to your next-door neighbor on the other side, there should be no impact on them at all?
No. And again, as I said, we designed specifically the balconies to face either open space or public transit routes, so they wouldn't look over our neighbors. I don't know if you're familiar with the way our house is oriented in relation to our neighbors. They sit down about 12 feet lower than us, so really, there is no line of sight from our balcony down into their -- any of their, really, yard, or at least, and definitely not into their house. So, it definitely lends itself to what we've designed.
Okay. Well, as I said, I'm pleased to see the addition, and since there's no longer Homeowners Association, they did file bankruptcy. It's been about 10 years now, but there are CC and Rs. that are dited to the property with the setbacks and everything. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Racine, I also had a question. And the -- I will have to talk with Mr. Lunn here, too. The landscape removal, I'm afraid this got buried, and I didn't see it. Are you intending to eliminate the eucalyptus tree or the pine tree?
Oh, definitely. The eucalyptus has to go. It's shown signs of dropping branches, and I don't know if you've seen it, it's a very big tree. We don't want it to blow over in a storm and hit the new construction, so we're intending to remove the entire tree. The pines, we are not intending to remove. We like those trees, but we will cull the branches. I believe the traffic lady said that they had to be seven foot or below, we had to take those branches out, and we intend to do that.
Okay, thank you. Would you have any objection to a condition to replace trees that are taken down? They definitely wouldn't have to be the same type of tree.
No, we intend to replant that hill. We have plans for landscaping that hill, which are going to be complemented by the structure we're going to put up, but that's down the road a piece. But yes, to answer your question, we are going to put trees in there.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? None? Okay, Mr. Racine, we do not have any other speakers on your case either, so we will return to Mr. Lunn and then get back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lunn?
Staff does not have any more comments.
Okay. Mr. Racine, was there anything else you needed to add? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing and go to commission comments or motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I would like to move approval of entitlement number 2004-71094 AA-PC with the findings and conditions, and the addition of the Traffic Department's street improvement and landscaping the wording on that. And as I said before, I'm very pleased to see this addition, and that he has worked with his neighbors.
Wait, I'm -- do we want to reopen the public hearing? I'll withdraw my motion. Okay. Please come back to the podium.
I just wanted to clarify the scope. The sidewalk we're talking about, it's -- basically, the scope of the work is excavate frame and pour a sidewalk with a handicap ramp at the corner of Jan's and El Monte. Is that what we're talking about?
And we will have your question to Ms. Lowry.
It's your entire frontage along Jan's Road. So it's from the corner westerly to your property line. So, yes.
Okay. So, no other additions to that? No other projects that get tacked onto that? Just the sidewalk?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I had. Just clarification.
Okay. We will again close the public hearing and return to Commissioner Reynolds.
And, once again, I will move approval entitlement number 2004-71094 AA-PC with the findings and conditions, and added street improvements and landscaping removal.
Commissioner Reynolds, would you be willing to add a landscape plan that includes planting of more placement and planting of trees that would not interfere with site visibility, but will replace the huge eucalyptus that we're losing?
I think that that's appropriate, to replace just the eucalyptus, because that's the only one that they are removing.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. Okay. Are there any comments to the motion? None. Commissioner Reynolds, is there anything else you want to add? All right, let's vote, please.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Again, there is a 10-day appeal period. Thank you. Will the Secretary please call case 6C?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6C regarding case PPD 2006-70058. Applicant David and Leslie Giridelli request to allow the construction of a one-story addition to an existing, one-story, single-family dwelling. Location: 1981 Marview Drive. Recommendation: Approved with conditions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chang, you're presenting.
Yes, good evening, Chair Wall and members of the Commissions. And for your consideration today, what we have is PPD 2006-7005A, and if you can turn your attention to the screen. And the applicant is proposing to have addition to existing, single-family detached dwellings. And the project consisted of a single-story addition, consists of a front entry, family room, bedroom, bathroom, and also a garage expansion. The project location will be at the 1981 Marview Drive, at the corner of Marview Drive and Herb's Road. And this is the existing front elevation of the house. This is a partial rear elevation of the existing house. For a building design, the applicant is proposing to construct approximately 1,600 square feet, additional square feet to existing, one-story house. And colors and materials will match the existing house, and the building height will be approximately 18 feet and 4 inches. For recommendations, staff is recommending the commission to approve the project subject -- based on the findings and subject to conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is ready for any question.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Are there any questions for Mr. Chang? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chang. Are there going to be any of those large trees removed for the addition?
Part of the tree will be moved due to the condition imposed by the Public Works Department, especially on the side of the house, but for the rest of the trees, I think this question may be more qualified answered by the applicant himself.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none? Okay, we will go to Mr. Dave Giridelli. Mr. Giridelli, please state your name, city of residence, and you have 15 minutes.
Commission members, Dave Giridelli. I live at 1981 Marview Drive, Thousand Oaks. I was in front of you a few weeks ago on another project over in Newbury Park. I've been a resident here since 1980. We've been in the house that we're currently going to expand since 1989. I've reviewed the conditions, and I've had a few discussions with the Traffic Department, and I have absolutely no problem conceptually in acknowledging the issue of line of sight exiting Marview onto Herb's. While the fence, as currently located, has been there since before I moved in, I have planted material there and some trees to try and mitigate the sound that has been developing since Lang Ranch opened, as well as the traffic, as well as the increased miles per hour being driven through there. The only caveat I have to the condition would be that I would like to work with traffic a little bit. The original survey that was done, it appears that either the survey is wrong, or the location of Herb's is not matching up with the original dedicated street area. The impact on our property would be, as the condition is written, we would be moving that fence line in significantly, off of the corner in particular, so that the actual easement area would be coming within, I think, 12 to 15 foot. I'm still meeting setback requirements, but it's of great concern to me. In addition, while I, again, want to mitigate that problem, it's not just my lot. I don't know how much influence we have, but there are other properties that also need to relocate fences, and then I'm still not 100 percent certain. Traffic, I'm sure, can answer it better than I can, as to whether that's going to mitigate the dangers of getting out of that street. The same problem exists on El Monte, and you don't have any fence line issues there. So, I will work with staff on that, but again, I just want to reserve the right to come back in case there are problems that I don't currently anticipate. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Giridelli? The only question I have is, is what do you mean when you say "come back"? This is something that I think you have to work out with planning commission -- I'm sorry, with planning staff.
I agree.
Are you anticipating coming back to planning commission?
I agree. And I just want to go on record that I have a concern with regards to that one condition, that's all. I'm not asking to come back to the commission, but I just want to go on record that there is a concern with condition number 17, as it's currently written, and how it would actually be implemented in the field.
Okay, thank you for that, and we will have staff address that question.
Okay.
There are no other speakers on this case. We will return to Mr. Chang. Thank you, Mr. Giridelli.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you. Mr. Chang or Ms. Lowry, did you want to address condition 17 further?
I can address condition 17. I'm not sure if what the question was, is a clarification on what the condition means, or I'm not clear what the question was.
I can probably clarify that. The way the condition is written right now, it's actually pretty generic. It basically says that the city has a recorded easement in the area. The city has not conducted any surveys at this point, and at the time when we proceed with this capital improvement, surveys will be conducted. That's my understanding in talking to Ms. Lowry today. The way the condition is drafted is that we're limited to what's within the recorded easement area. We cannot push the recorded easement area. It is what it is, whatever's been recorded, and so we'll work with Mr. Giridelli in that respect. But the condition is drafted generic enough, in the sense that I understand what Mr. Giridelli's concerns are, and we'll work with him when we go through the formal survey process to make sure that what has been recorded is actually what's out there. Hope that makes sense.
I guess I could add that there's a city capital improvement project, and irrespective of Mr. Giridelli going forward with his project, in the next fiscal year, the city Public Works Department will be improving this intersection, and that will include clearing the line of sight within the easement. So, that's an important thing that I know Mr. Giridelli knows, that if he does nothing, the city's going to still move ahead with this project.
And I think, based on our discussions this morning, correct me if I'm wrong, after the fence is removed, we can actually conduct the sight distance, the line of sight issues, and it might not be the entire recorded area that would need to have any type of modification. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, Mr. Giridelli, we're still with staff. We'll call you back in a minute. Thanks. Are there any other questions of staff? None? Okay. Please come back to the podium, and again, state your name, city of residence. You have five minutes.
Oaks, California. I'd like to pose a question. My concern is that I've done a survey, but I do intend to do another survey that the city's welcome to use as a basis for developing line of sight. My concern is that I believe these were dedications that were done back in the late '50s and early '60s with a recorded track map. There's -- appears that it could be that Herb's is not constructed consistent with the dedicated areas. Therefore, would it be possible, once that's established, and if in fact, that does prove to be the case, to redo the easements, so it's consistent with the physical features of the street?
That would be something that the Engineering Department, the Public Works Department in our office would work out as we go through this. Once we conduct the surveys and figure out where the actual easement area is, and if it differs from what's been recorded, then obviously, you, the Public Works Department in our office, will sit down and try to resolve that with you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anything else that staff needed to say at this time? No? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and go to commission comments and/or motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
I'd like to -- I'd like to make a motion to approve PPD 2006-70058. I'm concerned with the recent discussion, but I think it's something between the Public Works Department and the City Attorney's Office and the property owner, that will have to be decided once the city looks into the improvements of Marview and Erbs Road there. And so with that, I move the, I make the motion to approve with the findings and the conditions as attached.
Thank you. Are there comments? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I will support the motion. It looks like a good project. I'm sure the staff and applicant will get this worked out to everyone's satisfaction, and good luck with it.
Other comments?
And I'll simply add that I also am supporting the motion, and I'm sure that staff will work this problem out with you. Commissioner Reynolds, anything else? No? Okay, let's vote, please.
Motion passed, 5-0. And there is a 10-day appeal period. Will the Secretary please call case 6D?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6D regarding case, the appeal of RPMN 2005-70487. Appellant, Mitchell King. Applicant, Kevin and Amy Callister. Request to appeal an administrative decision which approved a side yard setback reduction from 10 feet to 7 feet 2 inches for construction of a second-story addition to an existing one-story, single-family detached dwelling. Location, 710 Triumpho Canyon Road. Recommendation, deny the appeal.
Thank you. At this time, I am required, the advice of our City Attorney, to recuse myself from this case. Please give us a few minutes here, because I am Chair. Commissioner Fisher needs to have a few minutes to come over and take over this case. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chang, you're presenting.
Yes. Vice Chair Fisher and members of the Commissions, for your consideration today, what we have is an appeal of our residential plan development, minor modifications. And the appellant is requesting the Planning Commission to reverse the administrative hearing officer's decision which approved the second-story addition with a side yard setback reductions. And for the background, on September 1st, 2005, the application is filed for a two-story addition with a side yard setback reduction. On February 2nd, 2006, the project is approved through the administrative hearing process. On February 10th, 2006, the adjacent neighbors at 2105 Glen Hollow Street file an appeal requesting the Planning Commission to reverse the decision of, by the administrative hearing officer. And the project request is to allow a two-story addition to existing one-story, single-family house. And the project design consists of a first floor expansion of, in a garage, and also creation for staircase. And on a second level, the applicant is proposing to have a master bedroom and bathroom with a 7 feet and 2 inches side yard setback, which 10 feet is required by the municipal code. This project location is at 710 Triumpho Canyon Road. This is the existing front elevation of the house. And basically, the second-story addition will be on top of the existing garage. This is the rear elevation of the house. The findings by, made by the hearing officers are, proposal comply with the precise plan of design criteria, and the proposal will not be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, or general welfare. And municipal code require, authorize the community development director to approve setback reduction with certain, with limited certain requirements. And the proposed addition will not contain any windows. Therefore, the adjacent neighbor's privacy will be protected. And the subject request is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as a Class 1 exemption. And the basis for the appellant's request are, the proposed second-story addition will obstruct appellant's view. The proposed design does not conform with the character of the neighborhood. And also, the requested setback reduction violates city's municipal code requirement, also fails to preserve the character of the community. Staff's response regarding the appellant's request is that city does not have a private view protection requirement. And the proposed design and location of the second-story addition are consistent or compatible with existing house in the vicinity. And the approval will not grant an applicant a special privilege, since other house in the track have a similar building design and also setback requirement. Recommendation, staff is recommending the Commission to deny the appeal, therefore uphold the decision by the hearing officers, based on the findings and subject to conditions. This contains staff's recommendation, and staff's ready for any question.
Questions of staff? None? Okay. A city attorney would like to add something.
You'll also notice in your staff report that there's correspondence from both counsel for the appellant and counsel for the applicant, where they discuss what type of review this appeal is going to play out tonight. I just wanted to let the Commission know that pursuant to our municipal code, this is actually a de novo review. In other words, it's not limited to any particular issue, excuse me, issue. The entire project is pending before you for tonight's consideration.
Okay, no comments. We'll go to the appellant, Mitchell King. Please state your name and city of residence, and you'll have 15 minutes.
Mitchell King, Wessex Village. I've been a resident for 15 years now. I have a PowerPoint presentation I'd like to share with you at this time. This is, this is just a cover sheet, basically all the information you already understand. In this presentation, I intend to prove that a three-foot setback variance, 2'7" from 10', will have a clear detrimental effect on my property. My property's privacy, sunlight, and aesthetic appeal will be further compromised by allowing the Callisters setback variant to their addition. This case is unique, and must not be compared to prior examples. Many members of the Village Homes community are not in favor of the Callister's proposed addition. This is a picture of the front of the Callister's house, currently approximately 12 feet. This is an addition, would approximately look, which would basically double the height of the property over the garage. This is a picture of my backyard. And on to the right, you'll see the proposed, oh, it's the two-story garage where the proposed addition will be. The additional height will make my backyard feel more confining. That is an approximation of what a seven-foot setback will be. And this would be an approximation of a 10-foot setback. As you can plainly see, the three-feet variance has an effect on my backyard. The next picture's, again, a picture of the garage of the neighbor. And the added window, as you can see, in the back of their home, directly faces my property. While there are no side windows, if you look at the window box in the rear of their addition, it's exactly pointing at my Jacuzzi and pool. I will have no privacy whatsoever, and I know that that is a major effect. This is a picture of the sun rising over their garage. This is a picture after their addition with a seven-foot setback. And here is a 10-foot setback approximation, and again, there's a difference between them that does affect my property. The additional height will remove my view of the Canio Valley. It's not a huge view of the Canio Valley, but it is mine. And you can see it off to the left, above their satellite dish. And that's not a very good approximation, but the best attempt we could make as to what the project's going to look like from my second story. The current project evaluation, the proposed addition bears strong similarities with several other local homes. Cases to follow were pointed out by Community Development Officer Steve Barrigan. My primary concern is that this is a special privilege, because the situations in the immediate vicinity have differing designs and layouts. My section of houses was built in the mid-'70s, and that, the list of exceptions to setbacks that Mr. Chang has compiled for you, were mostly approved in the initial planning and design stages done in the '60s. Only two other exceptions have been made in our neighborhood, and they did not affect anyone else because of green belts or side yards that don't border another homeowner. I'm not surprised waivers haven't been requested in over a decade, because everyone generally agrees that they want to comply with minimum space requirements for their neighbors. That's why you have over 60 signed letters, 68 to be exact, which were just handed out to you, from Village Homes property owners requesting that a waiver not be granted to the Callisters. One of the additions, or one of the properties they said was similar, is 1933 Tamarack, which this is a picture. A similarity is, I guess, they did build a second story. The difference is, the neighbors are only affected on the side yard, really no effect. It's a side-to-side construction. The addition is an example of a very different layout than what they're proposing at 710 Triumpho. And that is just a side-to-side view of Tamarack versus Triumpho. As you can see, that's my backyard that faces their house. 1987 Nettlebrook was another one that I have been told was a good similarity, as to why the setback variance should be allowed. In this, the only similarity I could see would be the fact that it has a second story. Over to the left of the property, you'll see that it has no neighbors. I believe that to be a flaglot. And no neighbors at all were affected by this addition. Again, the addition is an example of a very different layout from what is being proposed. And a side-by-side comparison. Now, 792 Triumpho is the most similar example. It shares the original floor pan with 710 Triumpho. Second-story addition mirrors that found in the Callister's proposals. This is a shot from the rear of the property, as you can see the windows that would be facing my backyard. The difference is, to the right of 792 Triumpho is a 33-foot wide green belt filled with fully mature growth, and that adds distance and privacy between the property affected by this addition. Side rear window faces the adjacent public green belt, not a backyard. The neighboring property is over 40 feet from the addition. This is a front view of the two properties and their neighbors. This is a side 3/4 view. This shows you the distance between the properties. That is a 28-foot difference, and that is the closest similarity that I have been shown as to the construction for 710 Triumpho. I have sent out correspondence, or have received correspondence from 68 property owners, and I've given them to you in packages. I have highlighted some of them. Two-story homes have a substantially greater profile and require special consideration as to the impact on the look of the neighborhood. One of the reasons we choose Village Homes over newer development is because we seriously dislike newer construction that builds its homes right on top of the other. It is a simple lesson we teach children when they are small. If I make an exception for you, then I will have to make an exception for everyone. The same applies to municipal code. One has to accept that Village Homes Westshore Knowles was designed as a planned community, and that properties were required to meet a basic requirement according to that code, deviation from this should not be permitted. By allowing variances in the municipal code, the Planning Commission will ultimately destroy the character of our neighborhood. In conclusion, a three-foot setback variance to 7 feet from 10 will have a clear detrimental effect on my property. My property's privacy, sunlight, and the aesthetic appeal will be further compromised by allowing this setback. This case is unique and must not be compared to prior examples. Many, many members of Village Homes communities are not in favor of this proposed addition. I hereby request the Planning Commission should err on the side of caution and deny the setback variances requested. If a setback variance is to be allowed, a deed restriction should be imposed on the side and rear-facing walls, not to have windows, to preserve my privacy. The Callister should be required to plan a minimum of, a minimum of one 48-inch non-deciduous box tree to break up visually the large expanse of concrete that I will have a view of from my backyard. I want to thank you very much for the time to hear me tonight.
Questions of the appellant? Commissioner Lynn?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your presentation. You have a second-story home?
Yes.
And in living space that overlooks the property in question this evening?
Yes, it does.
And you have, do you, because your property was not the subject property of this, obviously, tonight, but do you have windows that face the property?
That face 710 Triumpho? That's correct, I do.
Okay, thank you.
May I make a further comment?
Certainly.
When I purchased my home, that is the way they were designed, and when they purchased their home, they had the same choice as to purchase it or not to purchase it, based on the differing views.
Thank you.
Other questions for the appellant? None? Okay, Mr. King, we'll get back to you in a little bit.
Could I clarify something, please? There were references by the appellant to, there are characterizations as to this as a variance, and legally, there are, there's a difference between a variance and a waiver, and I just want to make that clear. The code has a section of the ordinance that applies to variances. It does give the Planning Commission the authority to approve a variance, but consistent with state law, there are very clear, there's a very clear criteria that has to be met, and clear findings that have to be made. The code also has a section that allows the Planning Commission to approve, that allows the administrative hearing officer to approve a waiver to yard areas in residential zones up to 50%. And the criteria, the findings that have to be made to approve that waiver are different than what have to be made in the case of a variance. And the staff report does refer to that section of the code, but I just wanted to make it clear to the Planning Commission that there were the two separate sets of findings that have to be made. This waiver requirement, the findings are much less stringent to make than they are with a variance.
Okay, let's move to the applicant, Amy Callister. Please state your name and city of residence, and you will have 15 minutes. Please state your name and city of residence, and you will have 15 minutes.
Kevin, my husband and I are the owners of 710 Triunfo Canyon in Westlake Village. I'm sorry, was there a third requirement on there?
Nope, you hit it.
Just checking. Back in the summer of 2003, when my husband and I were looking to purchase a home that we would live in as a married couple and raise our family, and we were very excited when we found 710 Triunfo Canyon, as it had been a rental property for many years and was in need of much TLC. It was exactly what we were looking for because we wanted to put our hearts and own personality into a house. But what stood out to us that day when we drove up to the house was the garage sticking out in front of the house and looking perhaps a little unfinished. We were extremely excited when we drove down the street just a few houses and saw 792 Triunfo Canyon. They were just wrapping up construction at the time of their master bedroom and bathroom. They have the exact same floor plan as we have and have the same desire to add on top of their garage. So for the next year, well, it's still ongoing, we turned our focus towards the interior and exterior of our home, hoping that someday we would be able to do the construction on top of our garage. We've done a lot of work inside the house. We hired a landscape architect to help make sure that we did professional and aesthetically pleasing landscaping on the outside. In fact, we have many neighbors that stop by and thank us for the work that we've done to the exterior of our house. And the question always on their mind is, what are you going to do with the garage? So we turn to a family friend, Jim Langenheim. He's a world-renowned architect. He was known for his work on the Transamerica Tower in San Francisco, local here to our hearts. He was the designer of the restaurant that sits in the middle of LAX, and he's currently working on the world's tallest building in Bangkok, Thailand. We're extremely fortunate that he's a family friend and willing to work on such a small project. So working with our builder and designer, they put together this look to be aesthetically pleasing, to not look like construction or an add-on, and to blend specifically into the residential neighborhood. Now, some things I'd like to point out about this construction is, it is modest. It is a master bedroom and a bathroom. It is 589 square feet. As was pointed out in the administrative hearing, the construction itself is a mere five feet above our current roof line. So not a giant monstrosity, not taking up the entire second level, but something that is adding a pleasing effect on top of the garage in a modest way. These neighbors that I speak of, as they drive down Hart Glen or Triunfo, this is the view they see today. As they approach the stop sign, they see our garage as it stands out so dominantly in front of our house. We would very much like them to see an aesthetically pleasing add-on. One of our concerns about a 10-foot setback and why we applied and have gone through these steps for a 7-foot setback is because we want to build over our garage only. And if we do the 10-foot setback, it would look maybe a little lopsided to be set in that much. The reason we want to build over our garage, and this is a letter from our builders in the package that was submitted to you, our houses are built with cable-reinforced foundation. Now, while this is great for an earthquake, not so great for building. There are risks with building on top of a cable-reinforced foundation. A cable can snap. There are problems that can go wrong. Planning ahead to those problems, we would like to keep the construction to our garage so that if something were to go wrong with the foundation, the foundation can be replaced in its entirety. That gets significantly more complicated if we move the construction over to the main part of our house. I mentioned that the construction we were hoping to do would be consistent with our neighborhood. You have been shown some pictures of other properties that have been built with similar 7-foot setbacks. If you drive anywhere in Village Homes, you'll see either original second-story homes with setbacks that are very close to the side of the properties, or addition properties like that at 792 Triunfo that were also built very close to the edge of the property. Now, as it pertains to Mr. King and his property at 2105 Glen Hollow, this is the aerial view that Mr. Chang shared with you at the beginning. And what I've tried to do is highlight where our construction is going to take place versus where his pool and his second story are located. He refers to an obstructed view out of his second-story window. As you can see, his second story is significantly behind where our construction will take place. And again, the construction that is taking place is a mere five feet above the current roof line. Additionally, the pool is setback significantly. So shadows, I would question, I question if shadows would affect his pool area. I'd also like to point out that there are cypress trees, you saw it in many of the pictures that he showed, on the opposite side of our house. Those are the larger portion of the view that he's speaking of as he looks down upon our garage and out to that side of the house. And more importantly, what I want to show you is the view that he will see. He showed you artist renderings. They are not our plans. They are not what we've designed. This is our current design by the architect with a mid-level roof line. Tried to make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible. This is a system-generated shadow. Our builder used a software program, and when doing artist renderings, they use this tool to estimate where shadows would lie. And using this tool for January, the month of January, at 10 o'clock in the morning, which is, as we're mostly, we should be aware, in winter months, the sun is quite low, you can see that by 10 o'clock in the morning, it has no effect on his pool area. We didn't want to trust the software. So on January 16th at 10:24 a.m., my husband went out and took a picture directly in front of our house. Again, this was winter months, so the sun was still quite low. We would expect that by the summer months, when he'd be enjoying his pool, the construction should not obstruct his sun. Now I'd like to turn the attention to the 68 statements that he submitted to you. I'm not sure if he shared with you the cover letter that went with those statements, but I'd like to point out some facts that were in the cover letter that accompanied the request for those statements. Frankly, if I had received the letter and I wasn't familiar with the project, I'd have signed it also. Some of the comments in his letter was, "For over a year now, my neighbor at 710 Triunfo has been attempting to build an addition closer than the municipal code allows. I don't think that anyone would say this is okay." And he goes on to say that for homes that greatly exceed their originally intended size. Let's take each of those points. Closer than the municipal code allows. Ms. Miller, you were kind enough to point out the municipal code that authorizes a discretionary 50% adjustment to the setback. So it's not exactly against the municipal code, which is what our neighbors were told. And he goes on to say, "I don't think that anyone would say this is okay." He did not share with them that the Village Homeowners Association has already said that it's okay. They granted us approval last March. He also did not share that the city planner felt that it was okay, or that that opinion was upheld by the administrative hearing. And then he goes on to scare the neighbors. There have been many cases in the news lately throughout the valley of homes that are being built way in excess of what neighborhoods should allow, 15,000-square-foot houses on little itty-bitty lots running, you know, house wall to wall. Mr. King's own property, according to the property rolls, is 2,768 square feet. Our property, if this construction is allowed to go as planned, will be 2,700 square feet exactly. So our home will still be smaller than Mr. King's. So I wouldn't say that that exceeds what was originally intended for the neighborhood. But the final point on the letter that he sent out was the fear that he instilled in our neighbors. You see, once the first person, and he referred to it in his presentation, is allowed to build an addition conflicting with the municipal code, many more will follow. Soon the integrity of our community will be sacrificed. Well, I love the neighborhood in which I live. I would not want that integrity to be sacrificed, which is why we have a Planning Commission and a homeowners association, both of which have recommended this project because of its design and its aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood. We will not be the first. It's been done. It's been done at 792 Triunfo, and I know Mr. Chang has also provided you some other And both the homeowners association and the city planner feel that it meets the integrity of our community. Last night, as my husband was arriving home, he saw another gentleman, you'll probably hear from him in a little bit, Mr. Harvey Flam. He was out circulating a petition. I don't know if that's been submitted to you yet. I understand he has many signatures on that petition. My husband saw him talking to a few neighbors out in front of our house. We'd never met these neighbors. We'd never talked to them. But my husband approached them after Mr. Flam left and said, "Do you mind me asking what that was about?" And they explained that they were shown a picture and they were given facts about our construction, that we were going to break the municipal code. When my husband showed the pictures of our actual plan and copies of the actual municipal code and the city's position on the subject, that set of homeowners that were passing by asked if they could submit a statement because not only did they want to retract their signature from the petition, but they wanted it clear to the Planning Commission that many pertinent facts were left out and that they felt misled. And I would ask you, if you were considering that petition, how many other homeowners, if given the opportunity to understand the entire situation, might feel the same way? Some closing thoughts. I understand from our city attorney that this is de novo, so anything is open. We have focused on the three-foot setback because we feel that many of the arguments that have been brought forward, particularly in the administrative hearing, were about construction in general. Today, you heard a lot about a window in the rear side of our house. That window would still be at the back of our house even if we did a 10-foot setback. There is also, by the way, a window at the rear of the house at 792 Triunfo that did the same construction, and it faces another property and looks into another property. I personally have not heard anything new presented here today, from what we heard presented to the administrative hearing, that would make a strong or compelling argument against a mere three-foot, I'm going to call it variance, but I know you used a different term just a little bit ago. We are talking about three feet and how it may or may not adversely affect a neighbor. I know that in the package that was submitted to you, a letter from a realtor suggested that property values would diminish. I have submitted a supplemental package this evening with some statements, one of which is quite extensive, by a real estate developer who talks about how values actually are created in a neighborhood, and that addresses the real estate values as well. Clearly, as in any hearing, we can probably get witnesses tit-for-tat to say it will or it won't affect property values. We are looking to improve our neighborhood. I respectfully ask that you deny the appeal. Thank you very much.
Any questions of the applicant? None? Okay, we have nine speaker cards. Each speaker will get four minutes. The first one is Doyle Gensler, followed by Marla Adams. Please state your name and city of residence, and you'll have four minutes.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Vice Chairman. Commission members, my name is Doyle Gensler. I live at 792 Triunfo Canyon Road. It is one of the residents that was mentioned by Mrs. McCallister. My comments are rather brief, but what I would say to you is that in 2001, we applied to the city and went through the procedure to have a second-story approval on our house. You've seen actual pictures or computer-generated pictures. I'm not sure which one because I couldn't really see the monitor from where I was sitting. What I would say to you, though, is that I'm out in front of my house on a daily basis, and almost on a daily basis, I'll have a neighbor come by, backstep for a minute. We've lived there for 15 years. We'll have one of the neighbors come by that doesn't really know us, be walking her dog or whatever, and they'll say, you know, "I'm so happy that you made that addition to that house because it never looked right. You had a flat roof. It's basically that the garage I'm speaking of has a parapet wall. It's kind of like the Alamo. You could actually hide in there and look over the top, and it has no value the way that it is." And in designing our addition, we tried to make it consistent with what would be the nicest for the neighborhood, and without exception, I've never had a negative comment. Everything has been positive. We've had people say, "The house looks the way it should have looked when it was designed by the original designer of the house." We do have a window at the back of our house on the second story. That window is actually three windows in a cove. It's in the master bathroom upstairs. That looks out onto the property at 710 Triunfo into their backyard. But from where we are in proximity to the back of our property, we cannot see anything into that backyard. But the window itself was never complained about. Our property was posted. Nobody made any comments, one way or the other, in terms of our property. And as I said, everything that I've ever heard has been positive about it. I would urge you to deny this application and to uphold the decision of the hearing officer to allow the McCallisters to go ahead and complete their proposed addition. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Gensler. Next speaker, Marla Adams, followed by Bob Adams.
I have just brief comments. We are residents of, my name is Marla Adams, I'm sorry. And we are residents of Village Homes in Westlake Village. And as a neighbor driving down Triunfo, for years, I've noticed that flat roof. And seeing the pictures of the additions, I think it will do nothing but add to the, not only their property value, but the value of the whole neighborhood, and it will enhance the looks of the neighborhood tremendously. And I urge you also to deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Any questions? Thank you. Bob Adams, followed by Kevin Callister.
Good evening. I'm Robert Adams. We live at 1085 Triunfo Canyon. And we've been in Westlake about 18 years. Before the Callisters moved into that home, which was a rental property for years, it was one of the problem areas on the street because of its gardening or lack thereof in the front yard. What they've done already to improve it has been tremendous. But the flat-roof garage that looks like it ought to be in Santa Fe instead of Westlake Village has always been an eyesore, especially at the end of that street. In the case of our home, we have a flat-roof garage that used to have a flat facade, and we changed the front of our garage, even though we're way off the street. Looking down the driveway at our house now, you see that it has an angled tile roof that fits in, is in keeping with the rest of the house. When the Genslers added their second story to their house, I was one of the cheerleaders for that because of the effect it has. But even their house, as nice as it is, is not at the end of the street like the Callister's house is. And I certainly hope that the commission will deny this appeal and allow the Callisters to move forward with their construction.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Any questions? Any questions? No? Thank you. I made a, air the, Mr. Calister, you're actually the applicant, so you don't get a second chance here. We will go to Sean Anzari, followed by Alan Ratan. Again, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Sean Anzari. I'm with Digital Architecture, and we worked on this project. Now, it's almost third year. The issue here is the two-feet setback or three-feet setback, the final issue. As you have noticed on the project, I'll get right to the point, we have no windows on the side of the addition that is facing the neighbor's house. So the window that we have over there is facing the other way. If we go another three feet back, we may be able to put actually windows on this wall, but that's not our intention. Losing three feet of the setback in the length of the addition takes away either our staircase or a chunk of the bedroom and the walk-in closet. We have been able to put a walk-in closet up there, a bathroom, and a good-sized bedroom, plus the stairs going up. And this is the only way that it makes sense to do the project over there, besides the fact that we have also a structural concern here. The slabs in the houses in this area, they're all with pretension concrete system. So we are forced to reinforce the foundation from outside the building. And we have to actually, a structure on the ceiling that will carry the beams and the columns that will support that wall on the setback that is sitting back. We try not to touch the structure on the slab because of those cables that are running every four feet, and they're under tension. Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Anzari. Mr. Ratan, followed by Bill Maxfield, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Alan Ratan. I'm a resident of Village Homes, 890 Rimcrest Drive. I just think it's important that everyone should realize, we want these homes owners to be able to improve their homes and not have to go through what these people are going through with the misleading statements and turning neighbors against neighbors trying to say that this is right and this is wrong. This isn't the way it should be. Everything, every time somebody improves a home for themselves, they improve it for the whole community. And I believe that we should all be in favor of people improving their homes, which increases the value of their home and all of our homes. I don't think we should take into account statements that are misleading and asking people to sign statements that only get one side of the story. I have a neighbor who was given one of these, who received a flyer, and he talked, we talked about it, and it was completely misleading. He had no idea what the case was about, and to read that statement, he really thought, "This is really going overboard, a big oversized home like they put in Beverly Hills." And it's just not the case. These people have been misled, misled. Anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Any questions? Nope? Thank you, Mr. Ratan. Next speaker, Bill Maxfield. Please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Bill Maxfield. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1987. And one thing I've noticed, my employment takes me all over the city, and I have noticed in areas like Westlake, because of the North Ranch and the Island and also Hidden Valley, Thousand Oaks, and this area will not go down in value. What happens, though, the homes, our home is particularly, in particular, is 30 years old, and we just went through a major renovation. Homes are going to be asking for that in the near future. We expanded the small kitchen and bathrooms. That is to improve because the lots are large and the homes are somewhat smaller in some of the areas, there will be more requests for this. As far as the Calisters are concerned, I know both the Calisters and the Genslers, and I saw that addition also on the Gensler home, which improved it immensely. It made it more attractive and certainly improved the value of the, not only the property, but the neighborhood. The Calister home is also right on Triumpho, which is the major road through the area, which is one of the first things that you see. And I will tell you that it will actually improve the view and the opinion of the area. I see no reason and no issue that three feet is going to make any difference, other than an issue of contention, unfortunately. But it will improve and will allow them to expand for their family. I would like to stay with the rest of the garage. Roof is ugly without that addition. I mean, it's just ugly, and I don't even have to have an architectural eye to see that. So I encourage you, please, to deny the appeal and approve the Calister's addition. Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Nope? Thank you, Mr. Maxfield. I have one last card. I can't tell if it's a statement card or wanting to speak. First name, Harvey. Please state your name, so we can get your last name and city of residence.
My name is Harvey Flamm. I live at 936 Brightstone Court in Westlake Village, California. I've lived in Westlake Village and in Village Homes for 16 years. The Village Home Master Plan has many homes with the same floor plan as 710 Triumpho Canyon. I find it interesting that the developer builder who built 710 Triumpho with a flat garage roof and the others with conventional roofs, why did he do it? Could it be because he did not want to detract from Mr. King's property and have the difficult time selling Mr. King's property? If you have seen the PowerPoints, the reason why that property had a flat roof was so that it would not show a cluttered area, or putting that property, Mr. King is in, in a, what you would consider a, almost like a coffin-type box. There's an old saying, "If it looks like a duck, flies like a duck, walks like a duck, and swims like a duck, it's a duck." This is definitely not a duck. This is a unique situation that should not be approved. I prepared a few comments, however, Mr. King's PowerPoint says it all. This is a special case, and it should not be allowed. If you allow this project to go forward, then you might as well remove the ordinance and code from the books. Because this is the extreme case. By looking how close these two properties are, this is truly the extreme case. And nothing could be worse. Nothing less than a 10-foot setback is demanded in this case. Thank you.
Questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Flamm.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to staff. Any questions, rebuttals?
Staff would like to comment on one of the other addresses within the location, within that vicinity, which did get the approval several years ago, which is 792 Triumpho Canyon, which is owned by the Mr. Gensler. And they did get the approval back in 99 for the second-story addition to existing one-story house. And back at that time, the municipal code requirement required seven feet for two-story addition without windows. And the proposal, it is doing a two-story addition, which doesn't have a window on the side, which does meet the requirement at that, at that time. And basically, sim, very similar type of a design as Mr. and Mrs. Calister's additions. And while staff looking at the, any type of a setback reduction request, is to look at if it's any merit to the, to the project, to see if there's any other design or setback granted or approved before. And in this case, since lower houses build back in the 60s, 70s, 80s, build according to the, the older RPD requirement, which is seven feet, side-by-side for two-story walls. And that's one of the things that staff review for this type of setback reductions. And since this project does have a similar career, this similar situation as other houses within the vicinity, therefore, staff is recommending the, to approve the project.
Any questions of Mr. Chang or staff? Commissioner Grimley?
Mr. Chang, just, just for clarification for my purposes, I'm hearing three, but then I'm, I'm looking at that originally was 10, and that would be going back to 7.2. Is it 2.8 or is it 3?
Actually, the applicant is requesting a seven, instead of a 10 feet, requires setback. The applicant is proposing a 7 feet, 2 inches setback. So the waiver will be 2 feet, 10 inches.
Any other questions? Okay. For the record, have five statement cards, four against the appeal, and one for the appeal. We'll go back to the appellant, Mr. King. You'll have five minutes. Please state your name and residence again for the record.
Mitchell King, Westlake Village. Boy, after hearing all that, I feel evil today. I took those pictures myself, and those are really pictures from my house. Now, you can have an artist rendering, you can show it in the middle of a green, beautiful field, but that's not reality. Reality is, if you go into my backyard, that you will see what I shown you in the PowerPoint Let's go through some facts. In June of 2003, the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission, you guys, recommended to the city council to change the setback regulations from seven feet to 10 feet for two-story homes. You at that time believed the mansionization of Thousand Oaks was a problem, and you addressed it almost three years ago. In August of 2003, the Calisters purchased their home. On September 2nd, the city council agreed with your proposal and made it law. On March of 2005, the Calisters received approval from the Village Homes Architectural Committee. It is my understanding that they had never told the committee at that time, which I would think would be a material misrepresentation, that a variance or a setback would have to be changed from the current municipal code. April through July of 2005, the Calisters got 34 signatures for their petition, which is in your hands. Of the 34, nine of them were not Village Homes property owners. Two of them were from the same address. Of the remaining 24, four of them have signed my extremely threatening petition or statement of fact. So that leaves them very few people, other than the people who have showed up today. This is a very emotional and a very strong thing for the neighborhood. And what I am requesting is that you guys uphold what you thought was good law in, back in June of 2003, prior to them purchasing this property. You should review the tapes from the hearing officer, which have some interesting statements by Mrs. Calister. You heard some interesting statements today from Mrs. Calister. Her words can't make the pictures wrong. The pictures are real. In September of 2005, I received notification by the City of Thousand Oaks that they had asked for a setback of three feet to 7 feet, 2 inches. That was the first time I heard from my neighbors, and I knew that that was going on. They had gone to the Homeowners Association Architectural Committee. They never talked to any of the neighbors. I go up and down my street, and no one has yet to tell me that they spoke to them about this addition. Just plain wrong. On March 31st of 2006, permission by the Architectural Committee of Village Homes expired. They currently have no Homeowners Association permission to go forward with this project. According to their own attorney's research, Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2804, that permits authorized or required, one, will maintain the degree of compatibility of property uses that the provisions of this chapter are intended to promote and preserve, considering the particular use of, on the particular site of existing or proposed uses on parcels within the zone in which the use is proposed to be located. And three, will preserve the integrity and character of the zone in which the use will be located, and the utility and the value of the property in the zone and the adjacent zones. I read this section as supporting my use of my home and the integrity of my property, including the reduction in value due to the neighbor, neighboring proposed construction. While Village Homes might have mixed use of one- and two-story homes, all instances of the construction of a second-story addition with a seven-foot setback, which was law at the time those additions were done, were on properties that were side to side. This construction is not side to side, but along the rear fence of my backyard. Please enforce the building codes as they exist today. Once you start making exceptions, it's a very slippery slope, and soon Village Homes and the rest of Thousand Oaks will begin to look like the San Fernando Valley, with large homes on small lots right on top of each other. Thank you again.
Any questions for Mr. King? None? Commissioner Grimley? Mr. King?
Mr. King, I had also seen that you had made a recommendation, if we were to go ahead and deny your appeal, that you were looking for a 48-inch box tree. Where were you thinking that you wanted that to be?
I was imagining a row of trees or something aside their garage as it currently exists, so it would break up the view of a 24-foot-tall cement wall.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and go to commission discussion.
I have a question for Mrs. Noonan. You know, I'm newer, so I don't really understand everything, but I would like, if you could give me a little bit more background, I kind of, I've heard a lot about municipal codes and, and what is our leeway? Are those hard, fast rules, or are there things that?
Are you talking about the difference between a waiver and a variance?
Yeah.
Okay, well, as Ms. Miller explained, state planning and zoning law has a process called a variance. And a variance is basically a request to deviate from the municipal code or your zoning code based on the unique topography of your property. And there's very specific findings that have to be made in order to grant a variance. This is not that situation. This is what's called a waiver. Our municipal code actually allows for deviations from our standard, development standards through a different set of findings. A variance is basically one step beyond that. In other words, our municipal code allows a 50% reduction. If the applicant was requesting a 75% reduction, that would go, that would require a variance. So it's even one step further. In this case, our municipal code sets forth certain criteria. We have certain standard development, standards that we have throughout the city. However, we have a waiver process for various development standards that allow the planning, the community development director or an administrative hearing officer and a planning commission to waive certain development standards based on other criteria other than a variance. And that's really the difference between a waiver and a variance. I'm not sure if Ms. Miller has anything else to add to that.
Well, I would just add that a waiver process is consistent with the municipal code, and if you grant a waiver, it is consistent. Many codes have this provision because they recognize that there are certain circumstances when a different setback than stated in the code may be appropriate. And it gives the planning department, the planning commission, or staff, whoever has the authority to make the approval, it has the authority to make the approval, it gives them some discretion to allow for, um, different types of developments and different needs that developments may have. So, um, it's not uncommon to have a standard and then a procedure in the code to waive that standard, given certain circumstances being present and certain findings being made, being made by the decision-making authority.
Okay, so let me just have more clarifications. Is this rare?
Well, it's rare in that it requires an applicant requesting a waiver to go to an, through an additional process and get a discretionary type review, whereas if they were, in, in other instances, if they're meeting the standard, they have a different level of review. So it's not done every time someone comes in and applies, but it's not, um, but it's not unusual for a waiver request to be made, for a waiver to be granted under certain circumstances. And, um, it's certainly consistent with the municipal code and it's consistent with, um, planning procedures as they are done throughout the state.
And our municipal code allows a, a, I'm sorry, a waiver process for not just setback requirements, but parking requirements, height requirements and so forth. It's not just in the setback area where an applicant can request a waiver.
It's an acknowledgement that circumstances are different from one area of the community to the other, to another.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Um, I'll start the discussion on this. It's never easy when homeowners do not agree with each other, especially immediate neighbors. It, uh, I think all of the commissioners feel very, that it's very difficult to make decisions and especially when people have to live next to each other. I was a little concerned about the tree. My goodness, I have a pool. I, I would think that Mr. King would end up with a lot of leaves in his pool, even if it was, you know, a tree that didn't shed its leaves all the time. But, um, I think that I've heard enough. I've spent a lot of time out there looking at the properties and the two of them. And, uh, privacy is a big issue with me, but I think that what has been submitted so far that I'm, if it's all right, I will make a motion unless another commission would like to. I will move that we deny the appeal and uphold the community development department decision.
Uh, comments to the motion? Commissioner Lynn?
I also, uh, agree with the denial of the appeal and would also like to comment. It's very, very difficult. The good news is we live in a, a community that is beautiful and we care where we live and, uh, and, and we have a government that allows us to speak out. The bad, the bad news is, is the, is, is the problems that it causes, particularly between neighbors that live right next door to one another, so. But I do feel that the, that the, the plan as presented is a good plan based on the, uh, the, the property and, and what you have to work with and it was well thought out under those conditions. And, and with that, I will support, uh, the denial of the appeal by Commissioner Reynolds.
Commissioner Grimley? No comments? Um, I will, uh, also, uh, support the motion. We do, uh, have standards, yes, that's true. Uh, every situation is different. Uh, we've got a great planning staff that ensures that we don't turn into a San Fernando Valley. Uh, but driving around that area, uh, this proposed addition, uh, fits right in with the area. Uh, it's well thought out. It's a good-looking design, um, going from 10 feet to, uh, seven feet, uh, two inches or, uh, eight inches, um, is acceptable. It, it makes sense. Uh, so I will, uh, support, uh, the motion. Commissioner Reynolds? Any final comment?
Uh, other than, I really hope that eventually the neighbors can come to some agreement as far as the landscaping between the two properties. And I'm very pleased to see the, um, the addition of this. I was very surprised when I drove down the street and saw the flat roof. And I think that this will enhance the neighborhood and can only, I think, raise property values, which is really not a concern of ours at all, but, uh, I'm very pleased with the plan.
Please vote.
Motion passed, four to zero.
Okay, there's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you.